Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the meeting of the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District's Board of Trustees to order for November 4th, 2021. Ask the Secretary, please call the roll.
Mayor Eli.
Here.
President Brown?
Here.
Mr. Sulick?
Here.
Mayor DeGea, present. Mayor Bachi. Ms. Dumas?
Here.
Mr. Joyce?
Here.
Got a call.
Thank you very much. I ask for the approval of the minutes from our October 21, 2021 meeting.
Move for approval.
Motion by Mr. Sulick.
Second.
Second by Mayor Eli. Question. Question without objection. The minutes will stand approved as they are printed. Now ask the chief executive officer if anyone has signed up to speak on a specific agenda topic during this portion of our agenda?
They have not, Mr. President.
Then we will have your report, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Beginning with the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, we have one active case among district employees. This brings us to 110 confirmed positive cases since the beginning of the pandemic, with 109 folks recovered and returned to work. We have no employees awaiting their test results due to COVID-like symptoms and no one remaining at home because a member of their household has tested positive. So following up on some discussions that we had at our last board meeting, I wanted to provide a brief update on the Horseshoe Lake Dam status, and I'll continue to do that as events evolve with that project. So just a couple of things. The city of Shaker Heights began the emergency controlled breach of the dam on November 2nd, and work there is expected to take about 30 days. Obviously, it's weather-dependent. The city of Cleveland Heights Council met with Gannett Fleming, their consulting engineer, on October 25th to hear Gannett Fleming's review of our work. Gannett Fleming raised no significant concerns with our work and, most importantly, had high praise for our analysis and our hydraulic model, because the hydraulic model is the key to this. Once there are no stormwater -- significant stormwater benefits affirmed with Horseshoe Lake Dam, the need for that dam on Don Brook goes away. So that confirmation of the hydraulic modeling is very important. And then Cleveland Heights Council continues to have questions related to this project, so Frank Greenland and I will be at council on November 8th to address those questions and to do a brief presentation. And then finally, this week, we recognize great employees and teams across the district with our quarterly employee recognition events. John has the folks listed here across the organization. I do just want to note that one of these recognition events is Monday, so there are some folks here that will be completely surprised because their recognition will happen this afternoon, Friday or Monday. But I do want to make sure that we recognize these folks. Folks are nominated by their managers, supervisors, and peers for demonstrating the district's core values and their commitment to internal and external customer service. We've modified these events due to COVID, so they're a little bit smaller. We actually go to folks' work areas and meet with them, and it's really a nice way to talk with folks, and I appreciate their work, and it's great to see everyone. So those were our Q3 employee recognition. And that's my report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any questions for the CEO? There are none. We'll go right to our action items. Let's start with authorization to advertise, beginning with request for authorization to publish notice calling for bids in accordance with Ohio Revise Code, Chapter 61, 19.10, for liquid sludge removal services with an anticipated expenditure of $100,000. Also request for authorization to publish notice calling for bids in accordance with Ohio Revise Code, Chapter 61, 19.10, for substation preventive maintenance and repair services with an anticipated expenditure of $1,200,000.
Move to adopt 345 and 346-21.
Motion by Ms. Dumas.
Second.
Second by Mr. Joyce. Is there a question? No question without objection. They're approved.
Resolutions 345 and 346 dash 21.
Thank you. Let's go to authorization to issue requests for qualifications and requests for proposals, beginning with a request for authorization issue in RFQ in accordance with Ohio Revise Code, Chapter 153, for stormwater model data management and supporting services. And then request for authorization issue in RFP in accordance with Ohio Revise Code, Chapter 153, for design and construction administration/resident project representation services for the CSO covert outfall inspection and repair one project.
Move to adopt 347 and 348-21.
Motion by Mr. Sulick.
Second.
I'll take Ms. Dumas as a second question. Just if you could, just to qualify what we're looking for here in terms of information, is this looking at projects or models that we've already put in place to validate or verify that information, or is this for new work that we'll be doing in the future?
Okay, we've got a slide. It's actually for both. We are going to be completed with all of our regional stormwater master planning efforts by the end of this year. Lake Erie Trips is the last master plan. So we have developed very significant stormwater models covering all the watersheds across our stormwater service area, and that has helped us drive master planning solutions, helps us drive design and construction efforts down the road. Those models are out of date as soon as the master plans are over, right? I mean that really. And we are advancing construction projects that hopefully will provide benefits that we can hopefully, you know, see. And every time it rains, a big significant rainfall event, things change in the system. And the system changes, the landscape changes. So George Remus is our manager of Stormwater Strategic Support. George, stand up just a second. So he's the guy that has extensive modeling experience, and he's the guy that needs -- we want to keep, bring on some resources to keep these models current and keep them updated as things go forward. Their real use going forward will be during advanced planning efforts, detailed design efforts, and I've talked before that we want to kind of hopefully extend our modeling services to the local communities to help them solve local issues as well. So this is a big effort, and George will manage this effort going forward.
And then I would imagine that, like any other model, it's based on a number of assumptions, including rainfall patterns, et cetera, and because those continue to change, I would imagine that there are implications or impacts based on the outcome that might result in either us modifying
Right.
work that we're doing or have done, or doing some type of redesign or modification.
That's right. As we go through either advanced planning contracts or detailed design contracts, we get much more detailed information that can indeed change the project slightly, and the rainfall patterns, of course, are changing. We do have the ability to run any real-time event. We've got our extensive reengage network and other resources on rainfall measurement. So we get a big storm tomorrow, we can run that and simulate that. So this is a very valuable service for the district going forward and for the member communities.
Okay. Any other question? No further question without objection. They're approved.
Resolutions 347 and 348-21.
Thank you. Let's go authorization to purchase, authorization to purchase polykem sludge collector parts from sole sewer supplier Pailton. Environmental products necessary under the Eastly Primary Settling Tank Rebuild Project in an amount not to exceed $250,000.
Move to adopt 349-21.
Motion by Mr. Joyce.
Second.
Second by Mayor Eli. Question. No question without objection. It's approved.
Resolution 349-21.
Thank you. Let's go to authorization to enter into agreement, starting with request for authorization into professional services agreement with government portfolio advisors for investment advisory services, period January 1, 2023 to December 31, 2022, in an amount not to exceed $100,000 with an option to renew the agreement for up to four additional one-year terms, and an annual amount not to exceed $100,000 for option years one and two, and an annual amount not to exceed $110,000 for option years three and four, to be exercised by the chief executive officer at her discretion, for a total agreement amount not to exceed $520,000. Request for authorization entered to an agreement with Cleveland Foundation, Eastland Neighborhood House, Providence House, McGregor Independent Living LP, City of Shaker Heights, West Creek Conservancy, East Cleveland Farmers Market, Preservation Society, Menlo Park Academy, Montessori Development Partners, St. Casimir Church, and Metro West CDC to implement projects under the 2022 green infrastructure grants for the combined sewer area program as presented in the total combined amount not to exceed $1,500,000. And then finally, a request for authorization entered into a one-year maintenance agreement with Paladine Protective Services, Inc., for security systems maintenance renewal project in an amount not to exceed $116,210.61.
Move to adopt 350 through 352-21.
Motion by Ms. Dumas.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sulick. Question? There's no question without objection. They're approved.
Resolutions 350 through 352-21.
Thank you. Let's go authorization to enter into contract. Let's see. Let's go authorization to enter into a two-year requirement contract with Bonded Chemicals, Inc., for delivery of up to 15 million 303,000 wet pounds of sodium hypochlorite solution to all wastewater treatment plants in an amount not to exceed $1,981,738.50.
Move to adopt 353-21.
Motion by Mr. Sulick.
Second.
Second by Mayor Eli. Question? Question without objection. It's approved.
Resolution 353-21.
All right. Let's go authorization to revoke a resolution. This is revoking Resolution Number 276-21 adopted September 2nd, 2021, which authorized the district to enter into a construction contract with SET, Inc., for Chippewa Creek Bank stabilization at Route 21 in Brexwell Project in an amount not to exceed $1,439,365.
Motion for 276A-21.
Motion by Mr. Joyce.
Second.
Second by Mayor Eli. Question? Just if you could, what happened here that we are not executing this kind?
Okay, this project was awarded, previous board meeting, and it was awarded under reasonable assurances from Dominion Energy that a major gas line would be relocated in advance of the construction project. Following the award, we got word from Dominion Energy that the gas main relocation was going to need to be delayed, and I don't have the exact reason for the delay. But this is a major gas line, and apparently during winter seasons, it would be highly risky to relocate this gas line. And they then told us that it would be a minimum of six-month delay on their end. We had awarded the contract. We discussed this with SET, and they were appreciative, you know, to hold those prices for six months, given potential changing conditions. The decision was made to not proceed, and then we will have to come back once Dominion has performed their work and we're sure that that gas main will be relocated to come back and bid this again.
Okay.
So this gives you the history of what occurred.
All right. So in this business, time is money, so I would expect it will cost us more to do it.
Well, I'm more sad about the lost cash flow, to be honest with you. But it is what it is, and, you know, that gas main has to go before we get in there, so it may cost us more money. We'll see upon the rebid.
All right. Any other questions? Other question? And without objection, it's approved.
Resolution 276A-21.
Thank you. Let's go authorization of contract modification, starting with request authorizing final adjusting change order for contract number 20007281 with March Construction, Inc., for ridge rope repair and Rocky River turbidity stabilization and realignment project by decreasing the contract amount by $48,759.83, thereby bringing the total contract amount to $389,711.27. Also request authorizing final adjusting change order for contract number 18007367 with Shield Construction Company for the Southerly Electrical Infrastructure Improvement Project by decreasing the contract amount by $783,126.12, thereby bringing the total contract amount to $17,619,398.36.
Move for adoptions of resolutions 354 and 355-21.
Motion by Mayor Eli.
Second.
Second by Ms. Dumas. Question, just briefly, 355-21. I'm assuming that this is not necessarily work that was non-performed, or so the allowance quantities are less than we anticipated, so it looks like as a result, we saved a few dollars.
So yes, President Brown, members of the board, yeah, we -- there was a majority of the specific allowances, and the GA returned, but in addition to that, we did have some base scope that was nonperformed. This was a result of the demolition project at Southerly. In coordination with that project, we determined that there were some things that were planned in this project that was ahead of demolition project that were no longer necessary. And then also, operations went to shutting down the gravity belt thickeners, so again, some upgrades associated with that process were no longer necessary, also attributing to some of the money coming back in the FACO.
Any other question? No other question without objection. It's approved.
Resolutions 354 and 355-21.
Great, thank you. All right, let's go for gas though here. Let's go property-related transactions. All right, let's start with authorization to acquire one parcel and fee simple known as permanent parcel number 48914033, located at 4770 Oak Ridge Drive in the city of North Rowton owned by Michael Aiden Norwalk Jr. and Christine Marie Norwalk, necessary for construction and maintenance Big Creek Main Branch Master Plan Project Area B C-NR-O2 Project to enter into a lease agreement with the Norwalks, to enter into an assignment assumption agreement with Western Reserve Land Conservancy, and to allow for the entirety of the payment to be dispersed to Ohio Real Title Agency LLC with total consideration of $315,000 plus closing costs. Also request for authorization to appropriate one permanent sewer easement at property known as permanent parcel number 00908021, located at 4010 Jennings Road in the city of Cleveland owned by Timothy E. Hyatt Jr., necessary for construction and maintenance of Pearl and Jennings Road Storage Tanks and Pump Station Upgrades Project, and to deposit the fair market value of $560 with Carrick County Probate Court as consideration for the same. A request for authorization to appropriate one temporary easement at property known as permanent parcel number 00908009, located at 3980 Jennings Road in the city of Cleveland owned by RJ Fish Development LLC, necessary for construction of Pearl and Jennings Road Storage Tanks, Pump Station Upgrades Project, and to deposit fair market value of $6,370 with Carrick County Probate Court as consideration for the same. Request for authorization to appropriate one permanent sewer easement, one temporary easement at property known as permanent parcel number 00908020, located at 3750 Valley Road in the city of Cleveland owned by Legacy Realty Group LLC, necessary for construction and maintenance of Pearl and Jennings Road Storage Tanks and Pump Station Upgrades Project, and deposit the fair market value of $1,017 with Carrick County Probate Court as consideration for the same. Request for authorization to acquire two permanent sewer easements and one temporary easement at property known as permanent parcel number 00908001, located at 4002 Jennings Road, the city of Cleveland owned by ICB One, Inc., necessary for construction and maintenance of Pearl and Jennings Road Storage Tanks and Pump Station Upgrades Project, total consideration of $150,000. And then finally, request for authorization to enter into two permanent sewer easements and three temporary easements at property known as permanent parcel numbers 00908004 and 00908010, located at 3680 Valley Road in the city of Cleveland owned by Philip M. Gardner Jr., necessary for construction and maintenance of the Pearl and Jennings Road Storage Tanks and Pump Station Upgrades Project, and to deposit fair market value of $2,055 with Carrick County Probate Court as consideration for the same.
Move to adopt 356-361-21.
Second. Motion by Ms. Dumas. Second by Mr. Sulick. Questions? Seems like all of these are kind of related to one big project that we're dealing with. I assume that the first one, 356-21, because of the amount has property on it, and it looks like we're entering into some type of agreement for them to be there for a minute until the matters get resolved, so. So this is a capacity issue, or this is a flooding area as well?
Yeah, we have a slide on this. It's the Big Creek Main Bridge. We've talked about this recently, previous board meeting. We've got pretty significant flooding going on, roadway flooding and yard flooding. There's two culverts. You can see them highlighted. The flooding is occurring in about a one-year storm event and/or less, and you can see, it's a little hard to see, but this stream through this area does two 90-degree bends, and 90-degree bends and streams don't really work well, especially when those streams are entering culverts. So the culverts are undersized. Flooding's occurring. We've already purchased the property in red. Two outlined in blue are under the acquisition. You've approved them, and we're just tightening up those deals. The one we're talking about is in yellow. So we are acquiring the property in this project area to execute, ultimately execute, you know, design and construction, to upsize those culverts, deal with those culverts, and hopefully expand floodplain storage. There's not a lot of storage in this area, so we're going to execute a project on the road to upsize and raise the level of service, reduce the flooding here.
So will any of this become floodplain itself?
Yes, that's the hope. You know, the properties will go. That allows us to expand floodplanes in those areas. Those streams will get rerouted somehow, and that, you know, detailed design will have to determine how, but that's the intent.
Yeah. I'm always concerned when I see these, because even if you create capacity to get it through there, that only means that somebody downstream's going to catch it.
Well, but that's the value of the model. We talked about the model, and the model looks at that. If we do something here, what happens downstream? I mean, that's the real value of the model. We do not want to move problems downstream and pay twice.
Okay. Any other question?
So downstream's Parma. What do you got?
There you go.
We've got the model that, and there's a number of other Big Creek, you know, you know more than anyone. The Big Creek is, there's a lot of impervious surface, and there is a lot of flooding and erosion issues throughout prevalent. So there are other projects, not just this project, other projects in your area, downstream of your area, upstream, to hopefully start to mitigate these problems and bring that level of service up as we go forward. There is a whole host of Big Creek project recommendations out there.
So not to belabor that point, but given the fact that, as we know it, Big Creek, in many respects, is really Little Creek. It's shallow and narrow, and so the whole issue around its capacity through these communities, is there some thought about some comprehensive plan to deal with the whole channel itself? Was that too big for us?
No, we're looking at the entire system. Our goal is always 100-year protection. We're not going to get there everywhere. It's very difficult to reverse 200 years of development, right, and laying impervious surface, but our goal is to get it as high as we can. In this case, we're at less than one-year capability in terms of flooding. To move this from one to, say, 10-year, that's a very significant jump forward, and we continue to try and incrementally take steps to raise that up as high as we can. In some areas, we will hit 100-year. In other areas, we may be maxed out at 10 or 25, but our job is to bring that level of service up across the area and do it comprehensively.
Okay. I'm going to take your word for it. We're watching.
We'll wait till the next one.
We're watching you.
I am quite aware of that. Call the roll.
All right. Any other question? No other question? Without objection, they are approved.
Resolutions 356 through 361-21.
Thank you. Let's go Sewer Use Code Matters. Let's see. This is adopting the findings of the hearing officer with regard to sewer account of Kevin Tate, Sewer District Hearing Number 21-006, that the customer's request be denied.
Move to adopt.
Motion by Ms. Dumas. I'll take Ms. Sulick as a second. Is there a question? There's no question without objection. It's approved.
Resolutions 362-21.
Thank you. That takes care of our action items. Let's go information items quickly. Financial report and investment advisors' report for the first nine months of the year. I would suggest that if you have a question or a comment, you can ask it now, or you can see my friend, Mr. Dupley, at any point. All right? Good. Let's go O and M quarterly report.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the board. This is the operation and maintenance quarterly report for the third quarter of 2021. We'll review safety, effluent quality, maintenance, budget performance, and then we have a short spotlight presentation from Lita Levin. Lita's a project manager in the engineering and construction department, and she's going to be talking about our electricity demand response programs. Starting off with safety, through the third quarter, we've had 65 total lost workdays and 136 restricted workdays. We're doing much better than we have for the last couple of years. You can see a downward trend from 2019. Still not completely happy. It won't be until we have zeros here for all of these. I want to make sure that our folks are returning home at the end of the day in the same condition that they arrived to work. These lost time incidents were the result of four events. Two of those were strains. One was an arc flash incident, and one was a laceration. This table shows a little bit more detail. I'd just like to point out on the third line there at Westerly, the slip with the ladder kickout, that one incident accounted for more than half of our lost and restricted workdays. I'll also point out that this is district-wide, not just for the O and M department, so the GNA with the laceration at the bottom is not an O and M employee.
Can I ask, what is a ladder kickout? What does that mean?
It meant the ladder slipped out while the employee was on it.
Oh, that kind of kickout, okay.
Yeah. The dart rate is the number of incidents per 200,000 person hours, or we say 100 full-time employees, that result in lost or restricted days. We've set an internal target of 2.0. Through the third quarter, we're just about at 1 for O and M and a little bit lower for all the district. On the right-hand side are a number of bars where we compare our results to other industry categories. Those results on the right are from 2019, which are the most recent available data. Generally, we're comparing pretty well to other industries in that respect. Moving on to effluent quality, for the third quarter, total suspended solids were below limits at all three plants each month. See a similar result for CBOD, where we're below limits. Again, for phosphorus, below limits at all three plants for the entire quarter, and then also for E. coli bacteria, below the affluent limits. I do want to point out, you know, I'm able to flick through these results pretty quickly, but it takes an awful lot of work for us to make sure that we're meeting our permit limits day in, day out. We have a really good staff. We have a lot of support, and we have good facilities, and so I just want to point out, even though I'm able to go through this very quickly, it takes a lot of work to get here. it takes a lot of work to get here. Moving on to maintenance, when we look at dry weather overflows in the collection system, we had one during the third quarter. We're up to five total for the year. On the left-hand side, we're tracking events from 2020. So we had 11 last year, up to five this year. This, again, this is a result of capital improvements that have been made in the system, but also excellent maintenance work on the part of our staff in, you know. Those dry weather overflow events were the result of some debris in the sewers, downstream blockages in three instances, and one where we had a damaged forest main near one of our pump stations. During wet weather in the collection system, we look at the performance of our automated collection system equipment. During the third quarter, that equipment was available 100% of the time. So that's a good result. In the past, I have included a slide here where we looked at the percentage of planned maintenance in the plants, compared current year-to-date with previous year. We implemented a new computerized maintenance management system in June. That information is not readily available under the new system. So we will be looking for metrics related to plant maintenance, and I will be presenting those in the future. And then finally, budget performance. The operating budget for the 10 O and M budget centers for 2021 is just below $62 million. Through the third quarter, we've spent about $41.7 million. Variance that we see there is attributable to four accounts or categories. Salaries and wages, utilities, contractual services, and chemicals are the four large areas where we have variances from budget to actual. And then you can see here is that the gray line that I've added is our actual spending for 2020. So we're right in line with that. I will note that over the last three years, we have, since 2019, we continue to decrease the operating budget in O and M in an attempt to close that gap between operating, between our operating budget and expenses. So we will continue to do that going forward. With that, I'll be happy to take any questions, or if there are none, I'll turn it over to Lita.
Questions? Keep moving.
Thank you.
President Brown, members of the board. As Frank mentioned, I'm here to talk about the demand response programs. And this program is when we use our backup generators at our treatment plants to power the plants. So just to give you some background on the emergency generators, they were installed in 2004. I'm sure a lot of us remember what happened in 2003 when we had the blackout, the northeast blackout. And everyone, including the sewer district, realized the importance of having backup generators to power our facilities and make sure we're maintaining our services. 15 years later, we realized that there were some improvements that needed to be made to these backup generators. So as part of the Southerly Electrical Infrastructure Improvements, which is one of the resolution requests today for that final closeout change order, we made some enhancements to the backup generators to accomplish a couple things. One was to make sure to improve the reliability in the event of an emergency if we did lose power. And secondly, we wanted to participate in these demand response programs. We wanted to simplify the startups of these generators to participate in those programs. So we, over the last couple of years, we've come to you to ask for your authorization to participate in these programs. So starting in 2019, a couple of years ago, we wanted to pilot the first program at Southerly, which was a program that involved running the generators around once a year. And we looked to engage N L X. We did request, had a RFP that go out, and N L X was the selected curtailment service provider. And this program did not have an out-of-pocket cost to the district. By participating in this demand response program, the anticipated savings or rebates would pay for the professional services of the, of N L X, and pay for the emissions upgrade at the backup generators, and also provide permitting support. So after that successful year, we wanted to add some additional programs to Southerly. So we came back to you about a year ago to enroll in some additional programs where we would run the generators a few more times, 20 times to be exact, over the summer. And this would provide some additional savings on our future electricity bills. And then earlier this year, we came back to you to add Easterly and Westerly. Again, we saw an opportunity to see some additional savings at our other two plants. And also having conversations with Cleveland Public Power, this actually helps the utility as well. So not only does it benefit the district, but it also benefits the utility. So in summary, the only out-of-pocket costs for the district to participate in these programs are paying for fuel costs and then a couple, a few hours of overtime. Again, the savings from this program fund the improvements to cover the emissions upgrade and then the professional services as well. So this translates, so this is the key slide here of, you know, why we came back to you so many times. So if we would have just stayed with that first program that we came to you two years ago, we were anticipating saving around $1.3 million. And by enrolling in these additional programs and making this district-wide at our three plants, we're estimated to save $4 million over the course of this contract, which is a huge benefit to the district, especially since we're hearing that costs, such utility costs are planning to increase in the future. So this is, this is good news for the district. And finally, I just wanted to touch base on the fantastic work that our O and M staff at Southerly did over this past summer. Typically, we're called to run the generators on those very hot days where there's peak demands. And there are times where we wouldn't maybe not be able to participate because there might be an issue with the generators, or our electrical load is dependent on the amount of water that we treat. So when we have wet weather flow coming in, there are chances for the electrical load to exceed the capacity of our generators. And so I wanted to show a graph of what was going on on August 12th at the Southerly plant. This was a week of very high temperatures, high demands on electrical side, and also storms were just rolling through the area. And so if you look at the yellow, which is the flow, you can see right during, right after everyone reported to work at the district, we had some storms roll through the area, and so the flows increased. We were also informed by the staff that there was an issue with one of the control panels on the generator. So it was not likely we were going to be able to participate in the demand response program. To my surprise, as I was looking, kind of watching that, tracking the programs, our staff was able to find a way to repair the generators so we could participate. And they were also, they did some strategic actions to shed some load because the flows were pretty high. And so they were able to figure out ways to shed that load and make sure that they were maintaining the treatment operations. And we were able to participate that day and earn some savings for the district. So I just really want to commend the fantastic work this team has done over the summer to really make this program a success. It takes about 30 minutes to transfer from utility to the generators, and there's a coordination between E M S C and Southerly, between the plant management and the electrical staff, as well as fleet services, to make sure we have the fuel. So just wonderful work by this team, and wanted to highlight all that good work. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
No questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great work.
Good work. All right. That takes care of our information items. Anything for open session? All right. Madam CEO, has anybody signed up during the public session portion of our agenda to speak on any subject matter?
They have not, Mr. President.
All right. Then I am going to actually go into executive session for a short period of time. Someone asked my vice president if he could.
Pursuant to Ohio revised code section 121-22-G1, I hereby move to enter into executive session to consider the compensation of public employees.
Second.
Motion and second. Roll call, please.
President Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Sulick.
Yes.
Mary Geeter, yes. Ms. Dumas.
Yes.
Mr. Joyce.
Yes.
Marla.
Yes.
All right. Let's see. Are we going to, you can go back here, can't we?
You can go back there. You can also go on the first floor trying to get whatever.
That's where. Closest. Go. We'll leave. The most.[1254.33] Coming out of executive session, I have, let's see, Resolution 32421, which reads as follows: Authorizing funding for year 2021 paid-for performance, including base pay increases for non-union employees up to 4%. Effect the first pay of 2022 in a budget amount not to exceed $650,000 for merit pay to eligible non-union employees to be distributed in January 2022 as determined by the chief executive officer with pleasure of the body.
Move to adopt 32421.
Motion by Mr. Sulek.
Second.
Second by Mr. Joyce. I'll take question, comment. Just, we had a very good discussion around this matter. It is an important issue for the district and for its employees and staff. Again, we continue to understand and appreciate the amount of work and effort that has gone into the process, particularly from where we were a couple of years ago. I would ask that as we continue to move forward, I know that you do have like a semi-annual review process as part of your evaluation criteria, so I would ask that probably at the six-month interval, that probably we should reconvene so that we have an opportunity to kind of understand where we are in the process and to address any issues or concerns that the board may have at that point in time, so.
Will do. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. If there are no other questions without objection, it is approved.
Resolution 324-21.
All right, thank you. That does complete our agenda for the day. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Alai, second by Ms. Dumas. Without objection, we're adjourned. Thank you.